You want to start the meeting then, or?
Go for it.
Okay. Joshua Friedman, Chairman, this is a web-based call. So we're operating under the following procedures. The session being audio recorded, please be advised that today we are also recording the video of the proceedings. We will not add feature in this meeting. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Board members and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting. Public comment will only be accepted during the public hearing portion of the meeting. The Chair will announce when the hearing is open and will ask for public comment. Public comments will not be accepted after the hearing is closed. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff or the Chair. When the hearings, the hearing opens, you may give your comments in the following manner. Use the raise hand feature in Zoom and wait to be called on. Before the hearing closes, we will ask for any new comments from people who are only able to join by phone or are unable to use the raise hand feature. If multiple people attempt to speak at once, staff will help moderate. State your name and address for the record. If multiple people wish to speak, the meeting moderator will call on you individually. Please listen for instructions. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about this process, you may call our staff at 860-444-5813 after the meeting has ended. Call to order an appointment of alternates. Good evening. The zoning board of appeals, public meeting of the town of Waterford now in session this fourth day of November, 2020, 6:30 PM. All the decisions of the board are final. In accordance with Connecticut general statutes, section eight dash eight B, any person agreed by any decision of the board may take an appeal to the Superior Court. Appeals shall be commenced in accordance with the section eight dash eight F and G within 15 days from the date of the notice of decision was published as required by general statutes. The zoning board of appeals, zoning secretary will now take role and will call each member's name and state. Absent if no response, if made ever, member's name is called.
Joshua Friedman?
Here.
Catherine Newland?
Here.
Michelle Crips? Michelle, oh, I'm sorry.
Here, I was muted.
Ann Darling?
Here.
Warren McKenzie? Absent. Jason Mariaski?
Here.
Danielle McCarty? Absent. And Darcy Van Ness?
Here.
Wonderful.
Yep, we need to appoint, we'll need to appoint an alternate for Warren.
Okay. Warren's not here, and Darcy Van Ness be seated for Warren McKenzie.
Okay.
Okay. So Ann, you're on this, is that right?
I'm sorry.
You're in on this portion of the, of the, of the meeting?
No, I am not. I also was not in on the public hearings. Number four, public hearing.
So we need to, we're points, we need to appoint Jason Mariaski for Ann Darling?
Yes.
Okay. Jason, you there?
Yeah.
Okay. Approval of the October first, 2020 meeting minutes? The first business in order is the approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to be submitted to the minutes? Anybody have any corrections? Minutes are approved as submitted.
It's a consent motion unless anyone objects, the motion is accepted.
Oh, okay, yeah, certainly objections, corrections, no corrections, so the minutes are approved as correct. There's no, we're accepted, correct?
Yep.
Okay. A little different. Received the applications, ZBA dash twenty dash eight, two forty-one Shore Road, Harry F. and Judith A. Haynes owners.
That's been officially or formally accepted, and we will be hearing that next month.
Okay. So we're at public hearing right at this point?
Yes.
Application ZBA dash twenty dash seven, appeals, appeal of James and June Winow. Owners and applicant in Brian Florrick, LS agent at four Ellen Ward Road. C dash FF zone variances are requested from zoning regulations, section eight point four. Side yard setback variance of seven point five feet to allow a side yard setback of twenty-two point five feet. And sixteen point one minimum lot size variance of thirty-four hundred and fifteen square feet to allow a minimum lot size of twenty-six thousand five hundred eighty-five feet, square feet. Variants are required to fix an overlapping boundary issue discovered on deeds brought forth which did not properly compensate for the residential structures as shown on plan. Entitled Lot Line Revision Survey Property Belongings to James June Winow for Ellen Ward Road dated ten fourteen, twenty twenty.
Link to the exhibit list.
List, I'm gonna, I guess I'm gonna read this. On for Ellen Ward Road dated September fourteenth, twenty twenty. Exhibit two, site plan dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty. Exhibit three, site plan certificates of mailing dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty. Exhibit four, DEO memo dated October twenty-six, twenty twenty. We will now hear from the applicant, Brian Florrick will present.
So Anna, do you want to?
Brian Florrick, Florrick Surveying LLC representing June and Jim Winow for Ellen Ward Road. They asked me to, to do a survey of their properties. They own three properties, four, six, and ten Ellen Ward Road. And when I, when I did the surveys of the property, I discovered an issue with the deed within four Ellen Ward Road. The deed set forth was, can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. Let's make it sure before I get, before I get rolling here. Um, when I, when I, when I looked at the deed for four Ellen Ward Road, it was, it was in three pieces. Track one, track two, and track three. The first track calls for fifty-four point eight feet bounded by Wesley by Ellen Ward Road. The second track calls for fourteen feet bounded by Ellen Ward Road. The third track calls for eight rods, fourteen lengths, which is a total of one hundred forty-one point two four feet for a total of two hundred ten point oh four feet from the post road. So if you're running southerly along Ellen Ward Road, it's going to be a total of two hundred ten point oh four feet. So what I, when I, when I held the distance, two hundred ten point oh four feet along the Eastley line of Ellen Ward Road, it hits the, the northerly side of six Ellen Ward Roads house. You can see it, it's listed as existing property line on the plan. I have a note there underneath the house. So what I wanted to do was create a boundary line which, which split four and six and corrected this deed. I call it an overlap in the application. And I held an existing hedge row. And you can see the, the infrastructure constructed on the property. It clears the fence. And I call it a proposed property line. Thank you, Anna, for, or Jill, for moving the plan for me. As soon as I, my can't figure out how my camera's not working, but, um, and what that does is it is kind of a best fit between the houses at four and six Ellen Ward Road. It was a deed brought forth from probably somewhere in the forties or fifties, and they just kept on repeating the same deed going forward and instead of correcting it. So what I would like to do is, is with ZBA approval is to create a new deed for four and six Ellen Ward Road and file the quick claim deeds to correct this issue and file the plan on the land records. It's, I don't want, I don't say it's, it's straightforward, but it's pretty straightforward as to what I'm trying to attempt to do here. So I don't know if, open up the questions or?
Are there any questions in the commission?
Attorney, Town Attorney Rob Avina, can you, can you give us a little more history on the ownership and the transfers that have occurred and, and how the structures got there? Is this, does this go back many, many years?
So it goes back many years. And I'm doing this off, off, you know, kind of off the cuff, but supposedly a town employee owned for Ellen Ward Road. And he was a former zoning officer at one point in time. And Winow's, Jim and June Winow's son bought the property. And he had, he had passed away, and then the property ended up in June in, in Jim Winow's title. So they own four, six, and ten Ellen Ward Road. And if you need a schedule of title, Rob, I can certainly provide that to you.
Yeah, I just, I want to kind of follow through a minute with you, so.
Sure.
Like jointer of title at some point, four was separate from six?
Correct, yes.
Separate ownership?
Yes.
Do we know at what time, like, was six built with a structure basically going on to the abutting, non-owned property?
I, I, I don't, I don't know when the, the houses were constructed. I don't know that off the top of my head, Rob. I do not know.
But without your terrific sleuth work, detective work, we have an issue here where the properties, maybe not too many times it sounds like, but there's a a sense, I guess, that the properties are separate, used separately, bought and sold separately without anyone realizing the existing building area.
Correct. That was a true statement.
And if you could go into a little bit about the, the decision to decide where to put the line. Yeah, I could give you an argument that, are you trying to give just enough to six to clear the side of the facing of the, of the sixth building rather than follow the natural hedge line? How does that affect the two parcels in terms of their non-conformities or existing non-conformities? Are we trying to, it looks to me like we're adding some side yard to six? And we're, and we're reducing the side yard of four?
Correct.
And how does that measure up, right? Like, what's our requirement for four now? From the zoning perspective for the side yard? So in some ways, it doesn't, I would imagine, did four meet the side yard prior to this proposal?
I, it certainly did, it certainly did. But in the same token, you know, we're, we're having, you know, a situation where, where the deed is set forth that was kept on repeating itself instead of transferring it with, with a survey done. I'm trying to, I'm trying to minimize my screen here so that I can look at my plan. Let me see if I can figure out how to do that. I have a full screen here. I, for some reason, I'm technologically challenged here tonight, I don't know.
It's unusual for surveyor.
I know, yeah.
For a lawyer, it's a slam dunk.
For some reason, I'm having a technical, I can't, I, I'm having difficulties minimizing my screen. So we're, we're in a commercial zone here. We have residential structures that within a commercial zone. And if you, if you wouldn't mind going up to my, my zoning compliance chart?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. So you have a thirty thousand square foot, and it was non-conforming prior to, Rob?
Okay.
And so, for, for the size, correct. And six is not conforming. You, you know, you have residential structures in a, in a commercial multifamily zone. So I, I am reducing the size a little bit, making it a little bit more non-conforming, but the thought being is the hedge rows there, we have the, the fence for the pool just outside of that. It, it's a nice natural boundary. I certainly could shorten that distance from the house for, for six Ellen Ward Road. I mean, that's not, that's not a, a big issue. But I, I just, it, it just, it seemed like a nice, nice natural boundary and a nice fit.
No, I'm just trying to walk through the requirements. I mean, there's, there's certainly a legal argument that you're decreasing the amount of non-conformity on.
Four. Oh, six. Well, actually, we, we'd be, we'd be increasing the non.
You're increasing.
Yeah, right, decreasing it, yes, correct, yes.
Creating a non-conformity on four, but you're decreasing.
Correct, on six.
Some point?
Sorry, Josh, say that again?
I just want to ask a question at this point. I don't have a raise your hand feature, I guess, so. I have a question, I don't know if it's time to ask or ask or not.
Go ahead.
Just, just, this is an application to, for number four, but these are all owned by the same person, and
Yes.
You're changing, you're changing the size of the number six. Shouldn't there be another application for that as well? You're, you're asking.
Do you want to answer that question, Jill? I certainly applied for that, but the, the town asked me to change that.
Right, so on six, we are not deep, we're not increasing the non-conformity. We're making the lot more conforming, so therefore you don't need an application to make it less non-conforming. I mean, sorry, yes, less non-conforming. Ooh, it's like double talk.
Yeah, that's a good point on six, but then I'm looking at the application. Are we, we're increasing the non-conformity as to overall size of four?
Four, four.
Is that, is that part of the variance request?
Yes.
Four is making the, six is also being, so I just, it just, it was just a question. I don't know the law, so on that, so.
Yeah, I, I, go ahead.
What's the distance from the house to the new side yard setback?
Um, can we, can we scroll up to the zoning compliance chart? Thank you.
So.
So it'd be from thirty-five to twenty-two point five.
Okay. Thank you.
So I don't, I might, I don't, is my question answered, Rob?
Yeah, no, you were helpful. I, I think we've, we've discerned during this hearing, which I think is important for the record, that six is actually becoming less non-conforming. If, if you want to grant some property to your neighbor, a separate lot, and all you're doing to that lot is increasing its conformity, that that lot can just sit back and accept the piece of land. That, that would be pretty typical, actually.
Okay.
What you don't want to have happen is whenever anybody proposes what we call another split, no matter what it is, here it's just a tiny place, the piece I'm talking about, folks, is that rectangle that Brian has drawn, which if you look at it, all you could probably do is throw a football the length of it, it's not very wide. But we're kind of, that itself would be considered a kind of parcel. So when that happens typically, I tell this to people all the time when they call me, twice a week sometimes, you know, I want to swap this with my neighbor. When you do it, the attempt is to make sure that when it happens, both lots afterwards are still conforming to zoning. And then that, and then when that happens, the zoning officer shakes her head yes, and it can just happen. I, Brian does the survey, I do the deeds, blah, blah, blah. We get their parcel release of mortgage from the bank, and then you consummate the deal. Here, it's a bit trickier. First, on record, he's identified that over time, these are exactly, these are separate lots of record. And even though they're owned by the same owners, they, they have the right to look at both of them separately. And they are proposing to get rid of a rather obvious non-conformity, which is they've got a structure on a different lot. So that's certainly a legal reason to, to correct the record. But in doing so, what you're looking at tonight are the two variances necessary to create that egregious error of having a Waterford building on top of a separate lot in the town, is that you're going to need to look at number four and look at the picture of it and go through the eleven reasons that we'll do later on the, on the next deliberation and say that that makes sense because it, both lots appear, appear in a more conforming manner, but you need to grant variances saying lot four can be shorter on its side yard and slightly shorter in the size of its non-conforming parcel. So we've talked about the legal reason, which is the, the house situated where it is. Now we go on to the aesthetics of what you normally look at, which is, does this make sense? Does it fit in the neighborhood? Does everything kind of line up as Brian has drawn it? Does anybody have any issues about the general design and appearance of the proposal?
Okay. Are there any other questions in the commission? Are there any staff comments?
I think Rob's covered everything that we would have brought up.
I'm wondering, I have a question. How did they get approval to build the property on, at six Ellen Ward Road, knowing that the property line went right through the existing frame house?
So I, I think we're, we're talking about properties that have been there for a long time. Probably to the tune of probably, I, I don't know when the house was constructed, and I can certainly find that out, but it's been there for a long time. Fifty years.
So it's prior to zoning?
Yes. I don't know, I, I don't know if it's prior to zoning. I don't, I don't want to say yes to that question because I don't know exactly when the house was constructed, but it's been there for a long time. And like I said, there was a town employee that owned the, the former zoning officer owned for Ellen Ward Road. He kind of, kind of winged it.
Well, they, they're not the ones in violation, I guess. Or, yeah, but when was the, do you know when the properties were split like that? Do you have that?
I, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look through my, my, my deed work. I don't, I don't have that right on, Josh, I don't have that with me.
Rob, do we need to know that?
Well, we, we need to kind of sketch around it. Do we know, Brian, like, like six, when it was constructed, we are, your notes would probably indicate that six was separate from four at the time?
It was.
Okay.
It was.
It may have been a classic case of not having surveys, which back then you didn't need to submit for a building permit, and six thinking they had a lot more room to play with and four not realizing how close six had come to him. You know, you do see that sometimes, even in subdivisions where people just, somebody made a goof. But this is not a bad attempt to correct it into the future that is the town assessment records, the, the surveys, the history, the lots are always shown as ten, six, and four Ellen Ward Road. There's certainly an argument to lessen non-conformities by clearing up two of the lots. Provided we go through your other criteria later, we're not making or doing violence to the rest of zoning in that area. Obviously, this is a public hearing. If the Harlands were here, or the Richards, or the Boscos, or anyone who received the certified mail, you know, as you guys know, you've been on the board for a while, some of you, you know that they would say up, show up and say, no, that's, that's a terrible idea for some reason, you know? So we would hear whether there was an impact on the rest of the neighborhood. But obviously, they're, they're not speaking up at the moment. So that's enough, I think, to at least put on record the history of the parcels.
Okay. We'll, we'll now open the hearing to the public comment, see if anybody's, I don't think we have anybody here, but are there any members of the public in favor of the application that wish to speak? Are there any members, I have to say it three times, I think?
Yep.
Are there any members in the public, of the public in favor of the application that wish to speak? Are there any members of the public in favor of the application that wish to speak? Hearing none, we're going to go to any, are there any members of the public opposed to the application that wish to speak? Are there any members of the public opposed to the application that wish to speak? Are there any members of the public opposed to the application that wish to speak? Hearing none, are there any other members of the public who do not wish to be categorized as in favor or opposed that wish to speak? That's a new one, okay? I don't think we have anybody from the public here, so I'm going to move on. The applicant may respond to comments and questions. Do you have any more comments? Brian?
I, I, that's, that's my case. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions from the staff or the, or the board?
I'm from staff. Go ahead, Michelle.
No, I'm sorry, I was saying something to somebody in my head. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
That's okay. Do we have, we have a motion to close the public hearing? Who?
I move that we close the public hearing on it.
Could you please say your name when you make a motion for Anna?
This is Michelle Crips.
You have a second?
I'll second, Darcy Van Ness, I will second the motion to close the public hearing.
Any other comments or questions before we take a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? This public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Brian.
Now we go into old, old business. The next business in order is discuss the application table that October first, two thousand twenty. Special meeting, application, ZBA dash twenty dash five, appeal of Neville C. and Gloria J. Petrini, owners and applicant, and James Bernardo, LS agent at twenty-three Division Street, R twenty zone. Variance is requested from zoning regulations, section four point four point one, front yard setback variance of twenty feet to allow a front yard setback of thirty feet. Variance is required to construct in addition to an existing single-family dwelling as proposed on plan entitled zoning location survey property of Neville C. Petrini and Gloria J. Petrini of property located at twenty-three Division Street dated August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty is now pending. Is there any discussion? I gotta get, I want to, I need to get back to that, that information, actually. Was it, does anybody else have discussion? Any questions or? I, yeah, there we go, I just want to get familiar with this again. Let's see. I'm going back in my email so I can get all the information. I don't have it, I don't have any of it printed out, so. You'll bear with me.
Is there anything you'd like me to put on the screen, Josh?
Well, I'm just going through the, the whole exhibit list, I just have to find Anna's, what Anna sent me. If you can think of anything you want to put up. If you can think of anything you want to put up there, go ahead. I'm just going to try to find this.
Yeah, we're working on it. Um, while Josh is doing that, I'll, I remember being there and I'm looking at the notes. And I just wanted to just refresh everyone's recollection. This is the one where we're looking at uh the variance from the front yard setback. This one is involving a single family house down on Division Street. This is an area town where uh the testimony was that not so long ago it was rezoned. And the rezoning uh has basically created one would argue a hardship um that everybody who's down there basically is non-conforming as to the front yard setback. The proposal is to uh allow a variance from the existing 50 yard front yard setback uh of 20 feet to reduce the front yard setback to 30. There was testimony and photographs on file that a front yard setback of 30 rather than 50 was consistent with several of the houses along the street there. And it would allow them room to add a small addition, uh of which there were several questions and comments regarding its location. But the applicant did go through um what their reasoning was, they also are in a coastal area management zone, which is a challenge for them because they can't use a lot of the uh back of the house, which fronts on Jordan Cove. And they are not proposing to do any work in the coastal resources or the FEMA special flood hazard area. So they have judiciously located the small addition so that they don't get into those environmentally sensitive areas. But to do that, uh they're before you, they are before you to ask for the 20 foot setback. And then also, I believe in your packages, is that correct or?
The findings did not go out to the main.
I'm trying to find, what Jill was it said that?
Yeah. We have, we're trying to get up on the screen for you, but we do have a set of findings that we discussed last time that staff has helped draft up uh to help you through the regulations of the town that stay under zoning regulations. You do need to make particular findings uh as well as your legal hardship. So I'm going to kind of roll through with this, but I'll help walk you through those also.
But you sent an email, who sent the email, Anna or Jill? Cause I'm trying to find that, that they were sent that information.
The findings were not sent in advance so as to not create a predetermination.
I see.
Um, about, I'm trying to pull them up. I'm sorry. I had them up and then they went away.
Technical challenges.
But this, this hearing's, this hearing for information is closed, is that correct?
Yeah, this is simply from the record. So what we've drafted up is something to look at for your motion. It's not any new evidence. It's from the record.
I see. So you're going to give us that now on?
Yeah, we'll go over it because now the sort of our new new is to make a motion, uh start with a motion to approve based upon of the, the attached findings. And then if anyone wants to change those findings, this is the opportunity to do so. But then that gives us a record in the file of how the board acted. So findings are drafts, but if you find that these findings are correct, then we're going to add them to your motion. And they would always be in the, in the record. So you'll have done your job. So when you look at what's up, is it up now for everybody? Everybody see those draft findings?
Yeah.
So uh I just want to go through them quickly with you. Some of it is just background, the description of the request and the background. And then below it, uh which we'll get to in a second, is that someone would move uh a motion to grant this, the requested variance for the following reasons. And that the board has considered the criteria under 27.5, which we're all going to get used to after a while. And it will note its responses below. So you have 27.5A, 27.5B. And these are all the findings required of you under your zoning regulations, which the court says when you grant a variance, if your regulations call for these findings, the variance is invalid without these findings. So that's why we're taking the time to draft the findings. So um, as you go through them, you'll see that Jill has listed a reason under each criteria. Uh, and I won't go through them all, but we basically, I helped her review the draft of the fact that all these statements we're making are from the record. So we're not adding anything to the record. We are summing up the record based upon the findings. So in dark print, you see that the subject parcel is within the R20. Historically, the property's been used as a single family home, which is a permitted use. The proposed 280 foot square foot addition is an approximate increase of 20% to the existing building footprint. And obviously, since no variance is being requested, the building footprint is, is still allowed in the zone. Under B, the neighboring houses to the north of subject property are constructed while the area was subject to a previous zoning district, which allowed for the 25 foot yard setback. The neighboring home to the south of the property was constructed some years later under the current R20 zone, which required a 50 foot setback. So there is a variation in the neighborhood between setbacks, but this one is consistent with its northern neighbor, slightly inconsistent with the southern neighbor. 27.5C, the proposed addition will not impact existing traffic conditions or create additional traffic hazard. 27.5D, there are no proposed changes to the property that will cause any significant light or air obstruction, nor any increased noise emissions, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibrations, inoxus, or offensive qualities or quantities that may impact adjacent properties. By E, the minor 280 foot square foot addition should not have any effects on the value and utilization of the other properties abiding or within the surrounding neighborhood. 27.5S, the existence of two FEMA regulated special flood area, special flood hazard areas on the subject property create an unusual configuration of area available for any construction outside of the flood hazard area. The proposed addition has been laid out in this configuration to avoid construction of the principal structure within the hazard areas. Other proposed configurations of this addition located within the building envelope would likely be located within the flood hazard areas, causing the entire structure to be subject to FEMA regulation. 27.5, the existing driveway is proposed to remain. An additional driveway to the south of the property is proposed. Additional driveway will increase parking capacity for the subject property, reducing the possibility of on-street parking on that existing roadway. 27.5H, there are no proposed changes to the property that would negatively negatively impact fire and or police protection to the subject property or to adjacent properties. I, the minor 280 foot square foot addition to the existing home does not negatively impact the character of the neighborhood. 5J, the parcel is serviced by public water and sewer service. The proposed addition would be supported with adequate water and sewer service. 27.5K, all other regulations, the board has considered the proposal and has determined that the requested variances are the minimal necessary for reasonable use of the property. Proposed minor addition to the existing home will not create any traffic congestion or hazards while preserving the surrounding neighborhood. Turn, under these terms and conditions, the board would move to approve this application. So if you have a motion uh to approve, uh or you want to discuss the findings, I would rather have a motion on the floor and seconded, and then we can have some discussion.
Do I hear a motion from anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve.
This is Michelle and I second that motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion of the details of?
Well, I've driven by it. I drove by it today and it looks like it's um, it should be an acceptable addition and that we should approve it. It looks like it would fit in nicely with the neighborhood and um I, I like the look of it.
Okay. Any other comments? Do we want to take a vote? All those in favor of approval of this motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Positive carries it. Passed.
Good.
Anything, uh, let me see, I gotta get back.
People over there now?
Oh, there we go. I gotta find my agenda. Okay. There we go. All right. So um, new business fiscal, budget fiscal year 2022 review?
That should have been in your packet.
I gotta find it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't print it, so.
We're going to bring it up onto the screen.
So how do I just share screen?
Yep. And then find whatever, wherever it is. Do you have it open?
No, I gotta go back. I'm sorry.
It was open.
Thank you.
Tonight, I have to.
Not bad. Don't, oh, don't, can't cancel. There, go to share screen. You want to hit?
Share?
No, it can't. You close that window because it wasn't open when you opened that window. Now hit share again. And find the document.
How's it going? How's it going, Michelle? You're nearly finished?
I don't see it.
It's coming.
You might want to reduce the size in the window. Has everybody had a chance to read this?
It did. Yes.
Looking at it now. All right. We're coming up.
And this is the same request for budget that was from last year as well.
Right, right. The members will be updated because this is, this, the members will be from this current fiscal year, which is from um July 1st, uh 2020 to uh June 30th, 2021. So the members will be updated.
This is a draft.
But this commences next, next year?
Yeah, this is for the next fiscal year.
So beginning July 1, 2021.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. But the members are going to be reflected in the past year.
Yep.
Am I going too fast on the screen or?
No.
And here's the history.
So if everyone has the budget summary, the uh, it's the same amount. You're going to try to operate in the same amount as you did last year. For advertising, which of course is expensive to put out all the application advertising, but you do get a fee for that, so it's reimbursed. Thirty seven hundred dollars. Postage is a hundred and sixty dollars. dues, conferences, and education is four hundred dollars. And office supplies, fifty dollars. So you're going to try to stay within those items um for forty three hundred and ten dollars. Uh, and you're not adding anything, you're not requesting from the RTM any, any additional funds uh from last year, which would mean you guys would be at a zero percent increase.
Yeah, because there's a history. Do you want to see the history of the?
It's up to them at that point. They just need to move to, yeah.
All right.
Appropriate that or, or move to a budget.
Yeah.
Present the budget for that.
Do we have a motion to accept this budget?
Hi, Darcy Van Ness. I will make a motion to accept this budget.
Kathy, I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion, any questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving this budget?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes carry it. Motion is passed. Annual report fiscal 2020 review? Everybody looked at that? There we go.
Everybody reviewed that in their packets as well?
Yes. I did.
Yeah, I did.
I'm reading it over right now. Sorry.
Sixty dollars. And then a hundred dollars for every bulk item. Residential and non-residential.
Not now.
Fifty base, fifty dollars for each of those bulk item.
Um, I mean this. We're, we're not collecting enough to pay for the advertising, is what it says, right?
Right.
Is that?
Asking about that, Josh. I mean, I think, I'm trying to think of other towns that I work in. Now, what an average application is, because you do have application fees.
Right.
So you guys, again, the gross number that you might be paying here by check to seek a typical variance, Jill, what do you think? What would be a typical amount?
I think in here, it's, it varies like from two to, well, from, I think, three sixty to five hundred.
Yeah, so your minimum application fees right now run from three sixty to five hundred.
Right.
It's not insignificant. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, you know, doing other applications, but so even though you may not, go ahead.
We had seven applications last year. So.
Yeah, so seven times, so you, there's your income of uh uh, it should have been a little bit higher than that, right? Why'd you, if you've got seven and you only receive fifteen hundred, you'd think it'd be more like twenty one hundred if it's a gross. Oh, you have to reimburse the state.
Yeah.
There's state fees involved.
Yep.
So um, you know, as you review the report, I can simply note with Jill and we can talk to Abby about her comment about whether the overall fee structure should be increased uh by fifty dollars or so to help to fray publication. By reach a ceiling where you might not want to be at eight hundred dollars to apply to Waterford when it's, you know, four fifty in Montpel or something. So we can do a survey. That's the typical way towns do it is they survey what other towns are, are doing. That's what we do with the beach fees almost every year.
Right.
It may be time for a survey.
Okay.
But that wouldn't affect your budget particularly. It's only affecting how you are attempting to reimburse the taxpayer.
All right. So this is just, this is just for, we do, we don't, we don't have to vote on this. We're just reviewing it.
No, for your information, you can use it for whatever.
Right. All right. Is there any other, any discussion on this from the board? Okay. Is there any other new business?
Not, that's then, not from staff.
No, nothing from the board, from the board? The, the next meeting, December 2nd?
We do, go ahead, Josh.
I'm sorry. Uh, not, uh, next meeting will be December 2nd, uh, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Correspondence, is there any correspondence?
Nope.
Is there a motion on the, on the floor during the meeting? Everybody want to adjourn the meeting?
Make that motion. This is Kathy.
Okay.
I second that motion. This is Michelle.
I second the motion and darling.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Ayes carry it.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.
I have to get there first. Oh, I feel like a cat with a leash on.
And then you do, and don't bother that.
In the red. Yeah, that should get me off quickly.